This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so by Zoom. Webinar ID is 85062985301 and the required password is 142296. I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Cottle.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. De Vies.
Here.
Mr. Dallow.
Here.
Mr. Yukes.
Here.
Ms. Jansen.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarski here.
Dr. Mort.
Here. Adequate notice in Agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record, specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on April 9th, 2025, in the gym at Joyce Bummer School, 80 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the Township Clerk. Stew, our salute to the flag, which is honorable. Well, Ms. Jansen, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do not require an executive session in the beginning this evening, so we will move on to Agenda questions. Agenda questions, please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. All right, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public, Mr. Kizmarski second, and Mr. De Silva. All right, we are officially open to the public. Seeing no one coming forth at this time, I need a motion to close the meeting to the public, Mr. Kizmarski and Mr. Dallow. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, this evening we will be having a Mawa student representative report, so we will move on to Dr. Di Toro's superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you. So just for everyone on the board to know, in previous retreats, we've talked about getting board certification. There have been a number of trainings that we've been able to take on through our retreats and through regular board meetings. And Matt is here to work with us on the final component of board certification, and it comes at the timely part of the year, your chance to evaluate. So you'll be trained on evaluating, so enjoy the training. Be calm.
All right, we're getting up to move, so we can see the screen. I think we might have to go this way. Yeah, we'll sit at one of the tables.
I said, I offered that. I could stand, I could sit right in front of the table.
We are still here.
Last time I cleared out a table like that, it was Thanksgiving. Okay, so as Dr. Toro mentioned, tonight we are going to work on the CSA evaluation process. And, you know, getting our time in here tonight is going to put us over the hump for board certification. So I will, yeah, congratulations to you all. So I will be in touch with Prima about further details on that, but basically, our NJSPA Bergen County May meeting will be where you folks will be honored. So hopefully, you can all make time on your calendars to attend, and it'll be great to see you there. So walking through the CSA evaluation process, I know many of you are experienced with this already, so I'm going to probably speak through a number of pieces that I think you've all pretty much got. I am open to questions anywhere along the way. This is a good refresher that we do to many boards at this time of year, especially where folks may not have been through the process before or are new to our tool. So the basis for the evaluation is really in statute code. You can see on the left side of the slide that it talks about the fact that it has to happen at least once a year, that the evaluation needs to be in writing, and the board and the superintendent need to meet. In some cases, boards infer that they only have to have board leadership or the board personnel committee conduct this process, but it's really done by the entire board. And there's a number of criteria around which the evaluation is based, and we'll talk about that as we go forward. The other really important part of this is that it needs to be done by July 1. And that is critical not only to meet statute code, but also for QSAK monitoring. You can see on this chart, one of the pieces of governance indicators which the board is responsible for is around the superintendent employment and evaluation, and that is seven points connected with having a policy and a contract to evaluate the superintendent, and then six points around completing it by July 1. You certainly don't want to lose 13 points on QSAK by missing the target on evaluation. The whole point here is that the evaluation is part of a process, and the process is geared toward continuous improvement in your district. The board self-evaluation is really the last step. This all really started when you created your goals last year, and the goals are a full 50% of the evaluation that you're going to be conducting on your superintendent, because of course you have charged a superintendent with fulfilling those goals. Those goals led to the action plans that have been presented to you in the past. They also have been part of your conversations all along, as the superintendent gave you progress reports going through this process. And the evaluation and board self-evaluation are really sort of the culminating pieces of the cycle. Okay, so our evaluation tool was developed in cooperation with ASA, the Association of School Administrators, and it is meant to address all of the things that are important to professional growth for a superintendent and also those things that the Board of Education is responsible for monitoring through its oversight responsibilities. There's two components to the tool. Firstly, there's a piece about progress toward district goals. That's a full 50% of it. The next piece is on leadership standards, and that is designed to meet all of the things that are required in the statute on evaluation. You can see that our tool has places for both the superintendent and the Board of Education to supply comments and ratings. There's a self-assessment by the superintendent. He or she will support his or her self-assessment by documentation and comments. The Board of Education also supplies a rating there, and they also have an area to make comments. There's a place for superintendent to also include a link to a drive where extensive evidence can be put for the board to review. The standards part of the evaluation is based upon the professional standards for educational leaders. There's six of them included in our tool. They look like that, right? Those all have their own rating scale, and they all have a differing set of standards and indicators that are part of the evaluation of that standard. That looks like that. If you look at the very top, I know you can't read this, of course, but each of those parts of the rating scale have specific language related to that particular standard. So board members should be careful to read those and to apply that criteria to their evaluation of their superintendent. Of course, here, there's also an area for a self-rating by the superintendent and an area for him or her to apply comments and evidence. Same thing for the board. There is also an overall rating for performance on the standard. So there'll be a bunch of indicators that you'll give a rating to, and there'll be an overall rating on the standard. And of course, those should correlate. You can't do excellent on everything and then give an overall rating of four. Right? That doesn't make any sense. So that is, we'll rely on board members to fill that out. Okay. Really key thing we stress with all boards is to look ahead to the timeline that you have, because these meetings come at a very tough time of the year. There's a lot of activity at the end of the year, and you don't want to miss the deadline. So backing up from July 1, there's at least two and a recommended third meeting that have to happen with the full board to complete this process as designed. So we have a July 1 deadline. Backing up, there's a meeting just prior to that where the board and the superintendent meet with the final evaluation document. Prior to that, there's a meeting of the board without the superintendent to arrive at consensus opinion. And then prior to that, we recommend an evaluation pre-conference, very similar to what a supervisor would do for a teacher. So there's three meetings of the board. Rice notice is needed for the superintendent in those cases, and those all need to happen, again, leading into that July 1 deadline. So these are all the steps. I kind of went over them in a backwards order just to stress that July 1 deadline, but it starts in the upper left of the slide with the goals setting that we mentioned earlier and progress updates that happen throughout the course of the year. The evaluation super, evaluation pre-conference is in green up there, and again, that is really about sort of setting the expectations, the common language, the sort of current standing of each of the goals, so that the board and the superintendent are speaking the same language when they start to document this stuff in the tool. The next piece is the superintendent goes in and completes their board goals and their self-assessment. Once that is done, board members will receive a system-generated email that lets them know it's their time to go ahead and do their part for the evaluation. If you do not get the email, don't panic. You can just go straight through our homepage website to the superintendent evaluation area, and you can go to the exact same place. It's not a dedicated link in that email. Board then individually puts its own assessment in there. And then if you look at the left side of the middle of this slide, you see the BOE meets to review the compiled superintendent evaluation results. So that's a sort of aggregated document of all of the input from each of the board members who are taking part in this. And from that, they develop the majority opinion. So there's conversation using those individual contributions as source material in order to create the final document. The next piece is the annual summary conference, where you take that final document, review with the superintendent, board president signs off, superintendent signs off, process is complete. Talked about that already. Yeah, so you will need, your username and password on NJSPA.org. In order to complete this, recommend you try sooner rather than later, just in case you run into a problem. You can get it corrected, and you won't get sort of into a time crunch around leaving it. There is a password reset link right next to where you sign in, so if you do forget, you should be able to recover from that very quickly on your own. But if something happens, you email with spam, whatever, get in touch with me, and I'll help you out. That is where the CSA evaluation instrument sits on our website, right on the homepage, kind of middle of the way down. Without the email, you can still access the tool. This is the board president's view of the compilation documents and the template for the annual performance report, which is the final document. You can see there's a report 1 and a report 2. That's the goals, and it's also the standards put together. That's the aggregated input from each of the board members. The annual performance report template is a Word template. It does not live on our system. It's a personnel document. We don't want to keep it on our system, so you can download the template, and there's a very nice one-to-one correspondence with each of the sections of the compilating, compilation document, so that you can quickly transfer the information from one area to the correct area on the final document. Those are what the evaluations look, excuse me, the compilations look like. That's the goals piece. That's the standards piece. Couple of quick notes to finish. It is responsible to the entire board, so everybody should take part in this. I can't tell when you guys are done, so I rely on the board president to let me know that everybody who's going to take part in this is done, and that way I can open up the gate and allow this board president to download the compilation documents. So do keep an eye on that as you go through. Board president typically writes the evaluation final document. If he or she is not comfortable with that, they can designate someone to do that as well. This is what the annual performance report template looks like. This is the final document. As you can see, it's one-to-one correspondence with the items that are requested from the individual contributions from the board. Last piece that I think is important is that when you do meet with the superintendent to have your final conference evaluation meeting, it is a majority opinion document, which means that, of course, if six people feel one way about something, three people feel another way about something, the six people's opinion gets recorded in the document. But at that conference meeting, if there's minority opinion that wants to be discussed or aired, that's the place to do it. It, however, does not get entered into the document. It is an opportunity, though, for the superintendent to hear opposing views, and that's an opportunity for professional growth for the superintendent. And then finally, just a sort of obvious thing, but it's something that we like to stress, make sure that you have considered the 12-month performance of the superintendent. Maybe this as opposed to things that may just have happened in the prior few months. It should be a fair evaluation that really takes into account all of the superintendent's efforts throughout the year. Most of this stuff? Oh, yeah. That's a number of resources on our website that if you get stuck on pieces of it, you want to learn a little bit more about it. There's a webinar, there's a document, there's templates, examples, et cetera. You can go there and review anything you need to, and certainly I'm always available for questions. I think we did it. Way to go, Mawa.
Anyone have a question? I mean, actually, also, it's pretty simple, I'm watching. There has been feedback with that a couple of times in Mawa. And there has been some feedback that some of the questions are a bit static and that they don't allow for our, as board members, sometimes to know some of the intricacies of what, you know, might, may or may not do at staff. There's just come up once or twice that some of the questions are, don't seem relevant to our sort of evaluation, right? And maybe I could talk to you about it.
Is this superintendent evaluation or the board self-evaluation?
No, it's superintendent evaluation. They just come up a couple of times, so I don't know if NJSPA, the question was, is NJSPA looked at, you know, we had this kind of similar one, and so I didn't know, you know, if they looked at maybe looking at the questions a little bit or changing, because there's just been the feedback from some board members that we kind of end up giving similar feedback because the questions remain the same, and then you kind of feel like you're just, you know, it's thoughtful, we go through well, but sometimes there's a question that we wouldn't know because it's maybe a day-to-day operational thing that's going on in school, but we're not there in the school to see if that's sometimes happening. Does that make sense?
Okay, so I guess to start, have we re-looked at it? Yeah, we have. So it's about a six-year-old tool. And I think two years ago, possibly three at this point, we went back to ASA and said, hey, let's look at this again and make sure this is serving both our memberships the way it should be. And the consensus was, yes, it was. So that part, yeah. When it comes to some of the things that you may not be able to see, for instance, you mentioned things around staff. I think it's important, first of all, to make sure you're asking the right question, right? Because some of the things around personnel, for example, really aren't the board's role, right? So if you're asking those types of questions, it's kind of, it kind of follows that they really do need part of the evaluation document.
I think that's a very disappointing, there are questions on the document that ask us how, you know, our observation of things that we don't see, things that are day-to-day staff things. I'm wondering, like, I have never seen it, I don't have access that way, because that's not our role. And the fact that this evaluation is asking us for our opinion of things that aren't our role, I think is a very disappointing.
Okay. So I think there's a couple of things to think about there as well. First is, there's opportunity there to say not observe, right, on some of those questions.
And maybe we've not felt that, like, and we feel like we have to.
Because, you know, it's so bad when you check off not observe. It's kind of like, well, if they're just going to do that, it's kind of like a ding, and that's not really kind of where we're.
Like, we're trying to be as instructive or, right?
Descriptive.
Descriptive, that's awesome, right. We're trying to answer, so, but that's a point, I guess. And I think the comments sometimes have been, we've not directly seen that, but we can give like an overall score, but perhaps that. And what we're talking about too, Matt, is, you know, there's like six questions in a section, right? So it may not be.
So this sounds like the standard area, correct?
Correct, yeah, it may not be, yeah, not the goal, it's the standards, right? So maybe like the one in the seven questions that we're like, well, we don't know for sure.
This would just be feedback to take back to, to go back to the questions and say, why are you asking board members this?
Yes.
Because it's not relative to their role, like they shouldn't, because in some cases. So I guess it'd be back to.
So it would be helpful if you could show me exactly, right?
Sure, okay. And I'll get, I'll look at the last years and bring it back to you.
Okay, yeah.
And we understand we're looking at it in an overall perspective, but I think sometimes that's just been the feedback in the past that we're not sure how do we go pin on something that we may or may not have seen, and it's really not an appropriate role of board.
All right, yeah, happy to take that back.
Thanks. So when do you suggest we begin this process? Because timeliness, we have always now been so tight on the July 1. So let's be timely this year. When do you think we should start this?
So.
To get everything done.
I think the first way to look at this is to look at your own calendar and see how we fit this into the other things that are coming at this point. Backing off that July 1 date is usually the best way to do that. You can fit this in at our June meeting, you can fit this in at our May workshop, et cetera. The thing you can do pretty much right away is have that conversation, whether it be in person or, you know, a series of documents that come out from the superintendent to set that kind of stage for the evaluation through the pre-evaluation conversation, whatever that turns out to be. After that, it's really up to the superintendent to get into the tool and start to populate it with the goals and with the self-assessment. And the board really can't do anything until that happens. So that's probably.
We'll talk, Mike and I'll talk.
The superintendent's self-evaluation will be done by the end of, there'll be the batch, April 25th, that, right? Which then will get prompted to start your process. From that point, there'll be at least three meetings that will have an opportunity to go through that timeline and do that, along the lines of your, your opportunity, typically your assessment, but my, my artifact self-assessment upload will be done by April 25th.
Great, make it mine. It will be, we should be very timely this year.
Which reminder you want to change.
We'll put that on there.
So I guess that if anybody gets stuck anywhere along the way, just reach out to me or the call center, if you're familiar with them. Usually it's login problems, and they can figure it out. Nobody here is really new, so usually the problem comes in with like a new person who got in our system with a personal email and now is out of district email, and those things collide, so I don't think we'll have that problem here, but if you do, you know.
But just as a matter of, for this year, to be as direct as possible, in the past, I've put different artifacts in. If you guys feel like there's a question that you need more, so when you go back to the evaluation, if you have a question that you think is something that you're not able to see as much, the artifacts don't speak to it, let me know, and I'll make sure that prior to present submit for April 25th, you'll have information in those cases.
I think that's an ideal topic for the pre-evaluation conference is, hey, we really hope to see more robust stuff on X, Y, or Z.
All right, it's like rice is dry. All right, here we go. All right, now we have reporter, Mr. Lamb, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do.
There we go, all right, we're on to our business administrator's report. Excellent.
Thank you, Dr. Mort. Tonight's business administrator's report will be a presentation on the preliminary budget for the '25-'26 school year. This is the third of four presentations that we're giving on next year's budget. So just showing you. There we go. I'm sorry. Thank you. Here we go. So again, the calendar, we had two presentations already. The final budget presentation will be April 30th, the official public hearing, and when the board votes to approve the final budget for next year, tonight's presentation will focus on enrollment, personnel, transportation, capital outlet, capital projects, and some other summer projects. Our enrollment data as of October 2024, the reason we use October, October 15th is the official record date where the state uses our enrollment numbers as a calculation of how much state aid we're going to get. So that's a very important date that we look at the enrollment. And the enrollment for our pre-K through 12 is listed there. And October 2024 enrollment had a decrease of about 80 students district-wide from the prior year's cap. So there was, has been a trend of enrollment decreases. And the top part of enrollment is enroll enrollment, and then there's also out-of-district students. We have 68 special education students for next year's budget. We are budgeting three contingencies because we, there's always the unknown or future out-of-district placement that we expect, although it's not final. We also have county vote tech, one shared student, they spend a half-day here, a half-day at the vote tech. We're budgeting two for next year. And then we have a number of students going to the academies in Bergen County. We're budgeting about the same for next year. And then we have two charter school students that go out of district. Charter schools are considered public schools. We are required to provide tuition and transportation for those. Our staffing, we have 454 full-time equivalents of staff. Because we are having a reduction in the total number of staff, although salary increases. Because we are having a reduction in the total number of staff, although salary increases will be occurring next year as per contract, because there's a lower headcount next year compared to this year, the actual salary in the budget is lower for next year than this year. So that doesn't happen often. Even in spite of that, the health benefits costs, which we discussed last time, are still going up significantly. The decreases to staff is in line with the enrollment changes. And then we have independent contracts and other associated costs with our collective bargaining associations, and of course, our unaffiliated staff. Next slide on staffing. Each year, we thoroughly examine the, our staffing needs to address the educational, curricular, and enrollment needs of the district, as well as instructional and support areas. And just want to say that our administrative team, Dr. Fair, Dr. DeFur, Dr. DeTuro, excuse me, all of our supervisors and principals spent an enormous amount of time looking at the needs of the students to see where changes were needed. In some case, fewer staff needed, in some case, more staff needed. The most important point here is that the staff changes will not impact any student programs or class sizes. All of the current programs are staying in place, and the staff, the class sizes are about the same. For next year's budget, a net decrease of nine full-time equivalent positions is anticipated, inclusive of additional school security officers for the K-5 building. So really, it's a decrease of 13 staff, but then you add in four security officers, that's how you get a net decrease of nine full-time equivalents. And just want to say, the township of Mawa has been very cooperative in helping us fund the school security officers in the building, so thank you to them. Transportation, transportation, we spend almost $7 million in transportation. And Mawa being the largest land area in Bergen County, our buses drive many, many miles, we're also required to transport out-of-district students. It's about 8.4% of our operating budget. And the prior year, we consolidated and made our routes a lot more efficient for some savings. This year, the routes are being budgeted, the same number of routes as, for next year's budget, the routes are being budgeted the same number of routes as the current years. Even with that, our bus contracts with the vendors are increasing by the CPI rate of 3.57%. That's a lot lower than it's been in the past four or five years, so we're actually grateful that it's only 3.57%, although our CPI rate is still going up by a higher rate than our tax increase. Again, we provide busing to a high majority of our students, over 2,000 students, about 27,000 students in our district are eligible for busing, again, and then about 100 out-of-district students. We have an ad hoc board committee that meets several times a year to review our policies and to make sure our busing program is working well. And just want to say that that committee has actually provided a lot of good ideas, and our transportation team, led by Tracy Spender, has really done a great job of being proactive with our routes. The state gives a transportation efficiency rating to every district in the state. One is really the average or the status quo. The higher, the better. Mawa's is 1.257, and so we're well above the county and the state averages in transportation efficiency. Capital projects, Greg Romero does a great job in managing our capital projects. We're planning this summer in the budget, but paid for from withdrawal from capital reserve, $100,000 to replace a walking freezer in the Mawa High School cafeteria kitchen, and also to replace the roof over the cafeteria at the high school. The total cost of the project is about $1.1 million. The good news is, the state of New Jersey threw a rod grant, is paying for 40% of it, so the district cost is less than $700,000, and the state will be paying over $400,000 for that project. There are other rod grants that the district has been approved for, they are not included in the budget yet, and I say yet because at any board meeting during the, during the year, a board can vote to go forward with a rod grant project, and, but we do have on the table almost $10 million of potential rod grant projects. Again, the state would pay 40% of the costs, and some of those projects include HVAC at Betsy Ross, HVAC at George Washington, HVAC at Mawa High School, and then roofing at George Washington. Again, the state would pay, if we were to do all those projects, the state would reimburse us an additional $5.7 million for those projects, but we have to fund the money from our capital reserve. So we do expect to move forward with some or all of those projects in the next several years. And then other proposed summer projects, in addition to the ones we mentioned, included in next year's budget is paving of various parking lots in the district. We piggyback off a bid that the township of Mawa conducts annually, and that saves us a lot of money by being included in their bid. So some of the paving that will be done is the loop at Lenape Meadows, and then Ramaco Ridge, the asphalt walkway area. Additionally, not included in the actual financial part of next year's budget, to be completed during the summer, is the rooftop HVAC unit replacement at Joyce Kilmer School. That money was already budgeted last year, but the project, in terms of planning the projects, sometimes projects are budgeted one year, but then they get extended into another year. So that project was planned last year, board approved it this year, and the work will take place in the summer. The total cost of the project is $442,000, but again, the state is reimbursing us 40% of that cost, so the cost of the district net is about $265,000. We will also be doing some upgrades to kitchen equipment at various schools, buying miscellaneous items like cafeteria tables. The good news is, anything related to the cafeteria or the kitchen, we can charge to the food service account. It does not get charged to the operating budget. So it's really the sales and the surplus that we have in our food service account pays for anything related to the food service program, so it does not take away from our operating budget. And then just a review of the calendar again, this is the third presentation. The final presentation on April 30th will be an overview, summary, and the tax impact. And then, of course, the board will be approving the final budget for next year. So if there are any questions or comments, be happy to take them.
Once they're approved, what is the time period that we have to, how long does that money kind of set aside for us to use?
I've never seen a specific deadline on it. I've seen some districts where the money has sat there, not completely spent for even a decade. I would not recommend that, of course.
But there's a deadline that we have to use?
There's no set deadline, but I would not want to wait too long because given political environment changing, office, you never know how an administration would potentially take back money if it went unspent. So I would, I would recommend spending it in a relatively timely manner, and not waiting too long, of course. But there's no official deadline. Maybe any other questions? If not, thank you.
Should be your name here, Dr. Kinsley. All right, and now, Dr. Fair, do you have a report this evening?
Typically, I do.
And he usually has audiovisuals, so we'll remain here.
Yes, so typically, I would have slides, but we have, we have the actual people here.
Oh, we're gonna have in-person reviews.
Yeah, I'll stand aside behind them as they introduce them. So we'll start with Mr. Jim O'Hara. I think you can just stand up and wave to our board, since they're essentially voting on you. So, all right, so let me introduce you to Mr. O'Hara, and I'll explain why we selected him, with the many candidates that we have with you. So our job posting elid over 60 applicants for our director of guidance vacancy. In review of those applicants, we invited 18 candidates to meet with our team for an introductory Zoom screening session. From those 18 candidates, we invited six candidates in for an in-person interview with a full committee, including administrators and school counselors. Two candidates were asked to complete a finalist presentation that introduces and outlines the candidate's unique vision for our program to our district. Mr. O'Hara has been selected by our committee. His finalist presentation focused on actionable ways to move our existing programs forward with an understanding of our district. Mr. O'Hara comes to us with experience as a high school counselor for Ry High School and a K-12 director of guidance for Ry Schools in New York. He is presented with leadership and vision and was able to connect with all members of our interview committee throughout our final interview process. According to Mr. O'Hara's references, he quote, "is a special colleague who finds a nice balance of leading while also allowing his people to have the space to expand professionally." Additionally, Mr. O'Hara has a firm understanding of elementary and secondary school counseling programs, and quote, "has a keen ability to see how things connect and come together across the district." We look forward to having Mr. O'Hara join our leadership team. And lastly, from our report, we recommend for our supervisor, emotionally majorities grade six through 12, and our supervisor of performing arts grades nine through 12, Ms. Caroline Kruger, will also have her stand up and wave. Here's that. A lot of applause by Dr. Fair, that's a good start. Our team underwent a thoughtful interview process to find our next department supervisor, where we reviewed 55 candidates' application materials, followed by the interviewing of 18 of those candidates via Zoom through introductory meetings. Five candidates were invited for in-person interviews with our panel. Our two finalists were tasked with drafting a 20-minute presentation that reviewed our department's data, where our finalists were to create an action plan to address areas of need. From this exercise, Ms. Kruger served as the clear choice. Her thorough presentation was carefully crafted to think about teachers as individuals, while also creating a roadmap that would be collective to the team, all inclusive of resources to support the work and to provide clarity along the way for the department. Her approach was balanced, supportive, and direct. According to Ms. Kruger's former supervisor, she expressed, quote, "She will always show up for your people. She does everything to the best of her ability and takes extra time with anybody explaining concepts, and she cares." Additionally, she also shared that Caroline is a quick learner, integrates contemporary ideas, translating difficult concepts to students and colleagues. And she emphatically closed with, "I know she is ready, she's capable and authentic, she thinks about every dimension of a problem and works to find a solution." So Ms. Kruger comes to us with 27 years of teaching experience, most recently from Tenefy High School. She has had several extracurricular and DTE teacher positions through her tenure, and she believes, she believes all of those have prepared her for the role of supervisor, and we certainly agree. So we recommend both Mr. O'Hara and Ms. Kruger without reservation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fair. I guess we're just saving you in the audience today. President's report, which I have, I have no report this evening.
All right.
Board committee reports? Oh, okay, so... Correct, correct, oh, correct. Board committee reports?
Transportation committee, last week, want to thank Mr. Lamb and Miss Spiller again for taking the time to be with us. Just two highlights real quick. We started a legal process for the 24-25 school year, we're going to be discontinuing it, found that there was no efficiencies that were found, based on the feedback we got, and added a great deal of work on Mr. Spiller's desk, so we're going to discontinue that for 25-26 year. Secondly, a couple of years ago, we started sending out courtesy letters to current fifth graders and current eighth graders that'll be losing transportation options for the next year, so in ninth grade and in sixth grade, when the mileage changes based on the schools that they're going to be in. So those letters will be going out the end of April, they'll only be going out to those that'll be, quote-unquote, losing the opportunity for busing. Those were the two items, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Poplin. Anyone else? Mr. Denise? Okay, all right. Okay, so brief report from instructional curriculum from our February meeting. I just wanted to provide some update on the reflective practice program. Dr. Fair came and spoke to us about that. It's going well, and teachers have liked it. They've particularly liked videoing themselves, it's been helpful to see themselves in practice. That's something that Dr. Fair also mentioned, that towards the end of the year, they'll be, they'll be showcasing it for the faculty. This is a pilot program, hopefully more teachers will participate in the future. There was also curriculum writing, and that was on the previous agenda. There's also been additions to our BCCS program, and that was something we voted on at the last agenda, adding the K-3 artistic program that's being added at Lenape Meadows, the extension of our pre-K program, and also the transfer of self-contained program back to GW. So those are a few of the things there. BCSS has been very supportive and collaborative, and that was report from Ms. Rizzo for us. From the March meeting, I just wanted to highlight that there will be a spring rollout of an additional reading program. This is a special education reading course that is related to the Orton-Villingham program. Mr. Poson came and spoke to us about this. It's a focused intervention program, helping students who are having reading challenges, and this will be something that will be implemented in the spring. So, and some of the benefits is, is to help improve word coding, enhancing spelling skills, and increasing reading confidence for our students. And this is going to be mostly a K-12 program. All right? And that's all I have. Any board member remarks this evening? All right, let's go back to the table to complete our voting. I need a motion on the floor. Ms. Ting Jansen, seconded by Mr. Hughes, thank you. Mr. Lamb, whenever you're ready for roll call, please.
Roll call on the mid 17A and B. Mr. Coughlin.
Stand.
Mr. DeSilva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Jansen.
Yes.
Mr. Chris Morrissey.
Standing.
Yes. Now, let's take new business. We have this evening 18A through M. We do also have a donation that I would like to just recognize, and that's 18I from Orange and Rock Room, so thank you very much for the donation to our schools. And we'll take that all together, 18A through M. I need a motion on the floor. Mr. Gallow, thank you, and Ms. Ting Jansen again, thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Coughlin.
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes, except on 18A, I'm standing from check 119254 and 119382.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jansen.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
Dr. Morgan.
Yes. All right, now, let's take 19. We have personnel. This is A through K this evening. A through K, we do have two appointments, so we, on behalf of the board, welcome James O'Hara and Carolyn Kruger to the Mawa family this evening. Thank you very much. And I do need a motion on the floor. Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. DeSilva. Thank you. Mr. Lamb, roll call, please.
Mr. Coughlin.
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallin.
Yes, and welcome Ms. Kruger and Mr. O'Hara.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Jansen.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski, ask Dr. Morgan.
Yes. All right, public questions or comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to three minutes and your remarks to three minutes and your questions to no more than one. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. I need a motion on the floor to open to the public. Mr. Gallin, second by Mr. Hughes. We are officially open to the public. Seeing no one coming forth at this time, I need a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarski, and second by Mr. Coughlin. Thank you very much. We do have our strategic plan meeting. This is number three work session that is going to be starting at 6:00 PM. So we look forward and thank everyone in advance for their participation for that. And now I have a motion to close the meeting, a motion to adjourn. We do not need a exact section at the end.
Keep it open, keep it open.
Oh, keep it open. Brief recess, I apologize. All right, we do a brief recess.
Should I need to open again? Yes.
Yeah, might as well. Okay, so motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. DeSilva, second by Mr. Kizmarski. We are open to the public and will be beginning at 6:00 PM for our strategic plan work session. All right, thank you very much.